I call to order this meeting of the Concord Planning Board on Tuesday, August 8, 2023 at 7:00 PM. The Planning Board is convening this meeting by video conference using the Zoom application. This meeting will be recorded for future on-demand viewing. I'd like to welcome everyone attending the meeting and take attendance of members and staff. Andrew Boardman?
Here.
Sue Felshen?
Here.
Abby Flanagan?
Here.
Mark Giddings?
Here.
Rob Almeida?
Here.
And myself, Linda Miller, present. Town Planner Elizabeth Hughes?
Here.
Great. For our meeting procedures, each vote will be conducted by roll call. There will be public participation during certain portions of the meeting. Those participating remotely wishing to make a statement or ask a question during public participation should use the Zoom raised hand function or star nine on a phone and wait to be recognized. Once recognized, you may unmute yourself in Zoom or use star six from a phone and then speak. When you speak, please address the chair, identify yourself by name, address and any relevant affiliations and speak clearly for the meeting record. Comments during public participation are limited to three minutes or less, except for extenuating circumstances such as for those with disabilities and are requested to be respectful. Answers to questions unless very brief and fact-based will be deferred for follow-up at future meetings. The Board welcomes written comments at any time instead of or in addition to those made during public participation. Please address those to Elizabeth Hughes, Town Planner, at ehus@concordma.gov. Written materials for this meeting are posted on the Planning Board section of the town's website. We'll now go to the first item on the agenda. We've scheduled a definitive subdivision public hearing in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81T, and the Town of Concord subdivision rules and regulations to review the definitive subdivision plan for the application of EMS development for improvement of a new roadway and for creation of four new building lots at 80X and 1053 Main Street. The applicant has requested a continuance without discussion to the August 22 meeting of the Planning Board so that he can continue to address issues raised by town staff. The applicant has granted an extension to the 90-day time period for the Planning Board to file its decision on the application with the town clerk to September 15. Therefore, I move to continue the public hearing in accordance with provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81T, and the Town of Concord subdivision rules and regulations to review the definitive subdivision plan of EMS development for improvement of a new roadway and for creation of four new building lots at 80X and 1053 Main Street, parcels 3730 and 3734, without discussion to 7:05 PM on August 22 and accept the time extension to September 15, 2023. Is there a second?
All second.
Thank you. Andrew Boardman?
Yes.
Sue Felshen?
Yes.
Abby Flanagan?
Hi.
Mark Giddings?
Yes.
Rob Almeida? It's Rob. Oh, there you are, Rob. I'm just voting on the continuance, yes?
Yes.
And myself, Linda Miller, yes. Thank you. We'll now turn to administrative business. Under this, we will have public comment. Public comment is limited to up to 15 minutes with no more than three minutes allocated to any one speaker. Public comment is limited to items that are not on tonight's agenda. Does anyone from the public wish to make a comment? Not seeing anyone. I'll say thank you and we'll move on to MBA Communities zoning update discussion. And Elizabeth, I wondered if you could share your screen with the most recent live version of the Horsley Witten zoning map. Thought this would be interesting to update everyone. Great. So, we had a third of our community meetings. This one was with regard to mapping and wanted to find out if people had comments on the process of mapping, questions with regard to that, or any comments to help us improve with the community outreach on the program. So I'll start with Board members. Would anyone like to comment on the July 26 mapping meeting? Yes, Sue?
Yeah. Well, first of all, I thought that it was a
Sue, your voice is rather faint. Is there a possibility you can turn up volume or get closer to your microphone?
Is this better?
Yes, it is.
Ah, very good. Okay. First of all, I thought it was a useful and productive meeting. But second of all, toward the question of the process, I found that this specific process of placing pins on a map has already built in a bias into the entire process of saying that we should select specific properties in which to place pins. And it, by that bias, it takes away any discussion of broader questions such as, should we rezone all of the property within the half-mile circles and nothing else? Or should we rezone only all of Zone C within the town and nothing else? Or should we rezone some other specification of broad characteristics of where we might place zoning? And I would like to see the process get broadened to capture this question of, are there land or zoning characteristics that should drive the question rather than simply placing a pin in specific properties? And by the way, I think it also biases the discussion toward large properties because it would be very onerous to drop a great many pins in some area that had a great many properties, but you wanted to rezone or you thought a particular person thought it would be fruitful to rezone in its entirety. So there's my high-level comment on this entire question of whether or not putting pins in a map is even a good idea in the first place at this point in the discussion.
Okay. It looks like Elizabeth has, I don't know if it's a response or a different question.
I think it's more of a clarification. So Linda, myself, the senior planner, Erin Stevens, met with the consultants on Monday and discussed the August 23 event, which will be more of the zoning discussion, not the mapping piece, but the actual language. And, but one thing that everybody should be aware of is that the consultant will be ultimately preparing three scenarios based on the information that they get from the survey information they have gotten at the various meetings. And at the September event, we'll be able to provide feedback on, okay, this is, you know, this is what the district may look like just the half-mile radius and how many total units that would be potential based on the zoning. This is if you were to include, you know, make, you know, the area larger to, let's say, just, you know, West Concord or include Concord Center or, you know, some of the, you know, on the map, the pins like 2229 Main Street. So they will be developing three different scenarios. And then also at the meeting on the 20th, they will be able to, on the fly, be able to change, you know, let's say, want to change one parameter in a sub-district to allow, you know, 100 units per acre, what that would do with the capacity and also how you could either, you know, shrink or maybe, you know, you could expand the district. So the conversation will definitely be much more involved than just pins on the map.
Right, and that's great. It's just that we ask people to put pins in a map. And by asking them for that as our first ask, having to do with mapping, we've kind of hinted at people that that's what they should give us. And they may have had thoughts about, they may have had broader ideas if we had given them a more open-ended question or if we had even given them that as a possible answer. And it seems like we've already lost that opportunity because we've already had our mapping workshop, not lost the opportunity to have the broader conversation, but lost the opportunity to ask people that question as part of designing a mapping scenario or getting mapping input from people in the town. And I, I think that we, that was a lost opportunity and we should try to find a way, maybe adjust the survey or maybe send out additional messages or post additional information on the MBTA Communities webpage or simply say it at the beginning of the next two workshops that, it's true, we ask people to put pins in a map, but people are allowed to give broader answers than just that to say what land characteristics or zoning district characteristics they would like to see included or not.
I think that's, I think that's a good point. And I think that we can have that in mind as we move onto the August 23rd and the September 20th presentations. I do think that there was an opportunity to write into a sort of a dialogue box on the, I don't know, webpage that
A survey.
On the survey, but also on the page itself, there was a little dialogue box that you could put in commentary. But you're right, we did ask people to pin. And, you know, but I think our discussions in the breakout groups were much broader than that. And then this is just one part of the tool. And so I think we also surveyed people and have some commentary from those breakout groups. And I think we can try and follow that through on the 23rd. So that's, that's good. Are there other comments you have, Sue, or other Board members have? No. Okay, then perhaps we can go to public comment on, just with regard to feedback on the meeting from the 26th. Then we'll go to some other issues for the MBTA as well. Yes, Carol?
Carol Savoy, 61 Bellknapp. This is feedback on the mapping meeting is what you're asking about, Linda?
Yes. Yes.
Um, I agree that the breakout sessions, we had, you know, more kind of color commentary than just where we should put it. But we also had, you know, discussions around that. And I believe the consultant was going to capture the notes from those and incorporate it into, you know, what they're coming back with. So I thought that was good. I think pins on a map really, you know, it really does derive the question or derive where people want the housing to be, right? And I think you need to give people that opportunity because I think the next two meetings are about like what we want the housing to look like, right? And the zoning and things like that, but not where we want to put it really. So I think you need to give people the opportunity to say where they think it makes sense. Because if we're, you know, building to this density of 1,000 units, right? That's 1,000 new apartments or whatever. We need to think about where they're going to be put and what impact that's going to have on whatever areas of town that we do it. So I think, you know, looking at the map and not just putting it all in the the MBTA area and spreading it out around town, I think is, you know, a good idea to do that. So you just don't, you know, overload one area of town with, you know, 1,000 units, right? And 1,000 units is 1,000 cars and it's two cars per unit, that's 2,000 cars. Or if it's one and a half, that's 1,500 cars. That's a lot of cars, right? So, and a lot of people. So I think, you know, it's important where we place it. We place it near, you know, areas where people can get on Route 2 easily instead of having to drive through town and that kind of thing. And I think, you know, where it's going to be is going to drive what's it going to look like, right? You don't want to put a six-story building or a five-story building next to single-family homes. You want to do that in an industrial area where there are no single-family homes. So my opinion is where it is drives everything. And I think there needs to be more than one meeting on where it's going to be. Because I think, you know, that's an important decision for everybody.
Right. Well, the next, you know, I think we've outlined that the next two meetings, other than, you know, there's a lot of meetings with various committees throughout town and then planner sessions that are sort of small group discussions that people can access Elizabeth and the expertise that we have in the planning department. So I think that, you know, this is a continuation. We know we are long, long way from done. But as Elizabeth pointed out, the next meeting really will be focused on zoning concepts, things like setbacks, open space, and then trade-offs of acreage versus density, where mixed use or ground floor retail fits in versus, you know, height restrictions and then parking. So there are some, within the limits of what the MBTA Communities Act allows, there are options to discuss with regard to the zoning. And then beyond that, we'll really be looking at the districts, the sub-districts and what makes sense to people about each of the districts. So we have a lot of conversation before we get to the end of the year. What I'll say. So I'll look, are there other commentaries just on feedback from the session on the 26th? Okay. Then there are a couple other topics I wanted to bring up before we have general commentary. One is, I think that we sent out to the Planning Board and it should be posted now, a memo from the Town Assessor with regard to the potential change in assessment values from the MBA, MBTA Communities Act. And if you had a chance to read that, I know the Select Board and the Finance Committee had some interest in that. And so we have some input there. And then secondly, there was also an letter from Town Council with regard to conflict of interest. So I just wanted to bring those documents to the Planning Board's attention. I don't know if people would like to have a discussion on either of those. But perhaps we could take one or both of those if anyone has any thoughts. Yes, Sue?
I, I'm only going to make a comment that I happened to be at the Select Board meeting last night for a reason. And I saw Ms. Flanagan's agenda item regarding her conflict of interest, a potential conflict of interest disclosure. And for myself, having seen that, I think it'd be, cause me to protect myself by following a similar disclosure form. And I just thought I would note that I understand Town Council's advice that we don't have to, but Town Council's advice was also that if we feel that we should, then we could go ahead and do so. I'm sorry that it makes extra paperwork for a lot of people all around. But I think that's a consequence of some of the lack of clarity in state law. So I just thought I would disclose that. But I also understand the Town Council has given their opinion that we're okay and therefore I'm continuing to participate in discussions on that advice. I'm just taking, going to take an extra step to dot every i and cross every t.
Thank you. Any thoughts on the assessors' letter?
Pretty straightforward. You know?
Okay. And then I think Sue also had an issue you wanted to talk about with regard to mixed use.
I would actually. So I, it's become increasingly clear to me and in the information that's presented to us over the last several months that although we can incentivize in commercial districts, we can incentivize people to retain ground floor commercial uses and build housing above. There is no way under the law to actually require that. And I understand why the law was, I think I understand why the law was written that way. But it does open up all towns and cities to a danger that if we include commercial districts in the zone, regardless of what our incentives may be, any property owner is not obligated to take the incentives. And in many ways, it could be simpler not to take the incentive, simply to build a multi-unit building because then you don't have to worry about conflicts between commercial uses and residential uses, complaints in one way or another of, or the extra difficulty of designing buildings. And we could hollow out our commercial districts and of which we have very little commercial land in Concord already. I personally think that that is too big a risk to take. It was my thought some months ago that we could ask relevant committees around town, I thought of the Select Board, of course, to contact our state legislators and ask them to modify the law so that we could write the greater incentives in, but nevertheless require ground floor retail. I think it's too late in the process to have that done for the Town of Concord. I still think it would be a worthwhile thing to do to see if there was interest at a state level in slightly tweaking the law. And I further think that if we were going to do that, one good place to start would be by asking the Economic Vitality Committee what they think about the risk of losing our very small commercial districts and having them turned into housing or parkmarked in housing to the point where our retail districts don't work well as cohesive resale districts. And if the Planning Board would support it, I would go at request to be on an agenda of the Economic Vitality Committee to express this idea to them or, or not. That would be up to the Planning Board.
Um, I wonder, Elizabeth, if when our consultants begin drawing a map based on the input from the community and present those options to us in September, if we could ask them to have sort of a, a low commercial versus a a higher commercial component? Can we ask them so that then we can actually see what if we didn't, you know, didn't want to have any commercial or what if we wanted to include a, you know, have them gauge a smaller amount of commercial footprint?
With I believe they can do that, but I'll, I'll ask for sure.
And that might be something that we could present so that people see what the difference would be. Because it seemed to me, looking at the way this pins are falling, they're falling on some commercial and industrial space. And that, that would be a risk. Yes, I agree. Yeah.
And not only, I mean, I've been, I call that retail in particular, but all our commercial districts. People may say, well, you know, there's a few empty buildings in this industrial or professional area. Why not change that? But once it's gone, we don't get it back. And these are very small areas of land, proportionally speaking in the town, where we do allow commercial uses. I would be very interested seeing a zero commercial and a low commercial scenario. And I also think, I think it was at one of the meetings run by CHAPA where somebody brought up some information about places where the incentives were not working to incentivize people to actually go ahead with ground floor retail. But I've forgotten exactly where I heard that at this point. And I think that we need to be very clear to the people of Concord when we're presenting this information, not simply to say, oh, we can incentivize it, but to say, well, we can incentivize it, but that may not work. And if it doesn't work, then it would have these possible impacts of hollowing out our commercial districts in town and skewing our tax base even further than it already is skewed toward residential rather than commercial.
Any additional, oh, yes, Mary? Hartman?
Yes, thank you, Linda. I noticed, I heard you say that you got something from the Board of Assessors estimating what the impact would be to the assessed values of properties that are within the overlay district. And I can't, is that on?
Oh, what did you say? We got a letter from them. It did not, it was not numerical in terms of their assessment of the impact. So that's, and I assume it's on the Planning Board website at this point. Is that not correct?
I can't find it. And you also mentioned the Select Board. We are interested to know that. So it's, so it's basically their opinion on what the impact would be. And I understand it's not property by property, but
So it, it should be up on the Planning Board's current documents page right now. But it was sent to Shannon to distribute to the Select Board and it will also be posted on the MBTA Communities page.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. I don't know if it will answer all your questions, but it was the response that we got from them.
That's good enough. Good place to start. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. So we'll begin that dialogue. Thank you. Okay. So then I guess, any other general thoughts or questions on the issue of MBTA communities that we haven't brought up that anyone, Board members or members of the public would like to weigh in on?
I actually would like to make one additional small comment, which I don't think it was, I think it was expressed, but I don't think it was sufficiently clearly expressed to the public at our workshops and meetings so far that 50% of the new district must be within a half-mile of the train stations, of course. And the other 50% does not have to be. But it has to be a reasonable distance is the part that I don't think we've been sufficiently clear about. And as for what reasonable beats, oh, Elizabeth, you're shaking your head. Am I wrong about the reasonable location part?
Yeah. So we did get clarification, our consultants did get clarification from the state. And so long as 50% of the district is within that half-mile, the, any other area can be anywhere else in the community so long as it is five acres or more.
Okay, thank you. I didn't, hadn't heard that clarification and that certainly solves a lot of communication problems. Thanks.
Yeah. Glad you asked that. Anything else? Okay. Then I think the next issue would be the draft scenic rules, draft for the scenic roads, rules and regulations. And so we had in our packet, the latest draft regulations. I believe that Elizabeth has also received comments from a couple of the Board members and comments from a couple of the board members and perhaps Elizabeth, you could walk us through that now?
Definitely. I have quite a bit open, so just give me one second. We are gonna start with we're gonna start with Sue's edits, but she was first. Okay. Just the first comment is just, that comment's been in there just based on the feedback from the Public Works Commission and Concord Public Works. Once the board finalizes this working draft, it'll be sent to town council for town councils review and comments, and then it will come back to the planning board. At that point, it will also be sent to the Public Works Commission, Concord Public Works staff and the Historical Commission. The board will have another discussion about whatever comments or issues and concerns town council raises before the board moves on to having the required notice public hearing for any adoption of the regulations. And then the second comment was a comment regarding deleting the word tearing down and instead have removal, rebuilding or destruction of a stone wall, which is more encompassing and also in making sure that the words or portions thereof are inserted. And so that's just again, taking down, deleting those words. This next highlight was just to further clarify in the opinion of the tree warden causes damage to a tree so as to compromise the health of a tree instead of just as determined by the tree warden. And then a comment was raised what is considered proper pruning and added this statement. The tree warden has accepted practices in regards to pruning and maintenance for trees. And we have just a couple of other additional clarifications under 1.34. And the next one was was the more substantial, one of the more substantial changes dealing with the definition of a stone wall. And this definition came from Professor Thorson from the University of Connecticut. And it's definitely more encompassing. I think it addresses many of the issues and concerns raised by Concord Public Works to be able to better define. Sue had a comment. Yes, it the first sentence didn't seem to work because these last two words were deleted, so composed of stone, some combination of natural and synthetic. I did talk with
should, I think that should be composed of stone comma in some combination of natural, synthetic, but the and synthetic certainly clears up my comment from earlier. I was, no, no, I was, I wasn't suggesting that. Leave, go ahead. No, go ahead. Undo that, please.
No, it's just the cursor's in the wrong spot.
Ah, okay. Thank you.
But I did have a chance to talk with Senior Planner Anne Clifford, who is a historic preservationist. We're, we're not quite sure what synthetic material would be incorporated.
And concrete, concrete might count as synthetic or mortar. It is a little clear. Actually, it shouldn't be in some combination of natural, synthetic. It should be in any combination of natural and synthetic. But I can see that you might want to follow up on for clarification.
Yeah, I'm not. Yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I would have some concerns that that might encourage owners of properties with stone walls on them to replace portions of the wall with some sort of synthetic material like you know, like you see pavers and things like that, which I, I mean, what would that would not be natural stone? I, I, I'm, I understand that you were getting at, there could be synthetic components there, but I think to I mean, nothing is
cement and concrete are not synthetic materials.
I mean, we certainly wouldn't want someone substituting a piece, you know, concrete for a stone either.
I feel we can we can just have it be natural materials. I'll, I'll speak to Anne again tomorrow and ask her. And I can also email Professor Thorson.
Great, because it's as written right now, it's still problematical because it says composed of stone. And of course, a wall doesn't have to be 100% stone because it can have some mortar in it somewhere. And if somebody jams their plastic bottle into a stone wall to, by way of not throwing, disposing of it properly, it's still a stone wall, but I it's hard to write the definition.
I think this is sufficient. Everybody really does know what a stone wall is.
They do, but then some lawyer, somebody's gonna hire a lawyer to argue that, well, because their wall is like this, the bylaw doesn't cover it, therefore they can just tear the thing down and not care.
I, I
I hope not.
This is somewhat similar to zoning. You, you, it's very difficult to write something that covers every what if. So I think if we come into a situation where there's ambiguity, then we can always hold a really quick public hearing and revise the regulations since these don't have to go to town meeting.
Ah, very good point. Speak, and on that subject, in the middle of the paragraph, I suggested saying it, it had said meaning no gaps and it's hard to enforce that there will never be a gap. But how about instead of specifying a size of gap? How about saying meaning no significant gaps? And then we'll just have to worry that assume that everybody knows what significant means. Then you could get rid of that, yeah. Add the extra space. Yeah, good.
Okay.
And then I, I did change knee high to at least knee height because that was just a minor crassiology issue.
So I'm just gonna so I don't know if anybody had any comments or questions on 1.47?
It made sense to me. In fact, many of these changes that have came out that you highlighted in yellow, I thought were excellent improvements. Oh, I just figured out what the problem here. It's supposed to say work on a stone wall. At least I think that's the problem. Does, do other people? Yeah, okay.
This is just a it's not twice in a single newspaper. It's twice in consecutive weeks. I think Sue, you had that question.
Yes, I did. And I thought that was an excellent way of fixing it.
And I, I think it's, there's no problem deleting.
The word historic there since it appears three more times in the sentence itself. Yeah, great.
And then
Andrew had a comment on that, but we'll take it up with it.
You can take it up then. So there Professor Thorson brought this question up. And I about the diameter.
He did?
Yep.
Cause I thought I did.
Oh, no, you did. Okay. So it's just, it's a question for the board and I think
I suspect we would be better to define it as a much smaller amount per square inch of cross section. If people are agreeable.
A penalty is not a penalty unless it hurts.
Yeah, and, and right now we're making it worse to cut a small tree than a big tree, which seems exactly backwards. I wouldn't even mind if we
Well, it's per inch and diameter, so.
Right, but but it's per inch and diameter. And if you consider the, the first ring, when it's one inch in diameter, it's just this tiny little ring. But when you have a huge tree, that last inch is many, many, many square inches of tree and it still counts as only one inch of diameter. So again, it's much more cross section of truck.
I'm not.
So do you measure this or could you charge it by the circumference of the tree? So an inch diameter circumference would kind of give you the same numbers.
Why not per square inch of cross section? Well, because it's hard to measure it if it's a lumpy tree, but we could say per square inch of, well, okay, so let me point out that item two, right below that, replacement of trees cut on a square inch per square inch basis at locations specified by the tree warden right there, where we're specifying a square inch measurement. So if we can specify it in two, surely we could specify it in one as well. Using this exact same method of measurement.
Let's use an example. So $375 for a, a one inch diameter tree and then a two inch diameter.
It needs to increase
It's, it's
More than linear.
It would
Yeah.
Four inches, so it would be four times and then a a three by three would be
It, it really needs to be like 375 times the number of inches times like something up higher. So there's a multiplier. So if you get to two inches, it is, it is 750, but if you get to three inches, it becomes 1,200. If you get to, you know, like if you get to four inches, it becomes 2,500, you know, all of us, you know, that, that kind of not, not a straight line, but a someone takes out something that's 20 inches. You know, you want that fine to be $30,000.
That's right. And you know, a 20 inch tree would be one that would be cut down. That's really not that big of a, a tree. Okay? That'd be expensive.
But I mean, I understand making the fine, the fine painful, but the, the real monetary cost is going to be replacement in kind of these trees. I mean, that, that's the real, I mean, that, that's, that's the real thing. Like the, the fine hurts, but buying a 20 inch diameter tree. And have it brought in. And I mean, we're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars for some of these enormous trees. If you're replanting 10 or 15 of them. So I understand that the, the fee needs to be there, but it's the, the real need of this is in the replacement. That, that's really where you're gonna hurt somebody.
Well, it certainly is.
You can't replace a 20 inch tree. I mean, you just like, if you could find one and then you'd have to plant it and then it would die because it's really hard to get.
I will say that a lot of towns have, I mean, I'm just like doing quick Googling. Most cities have a formulation for the cost of tree replacement, like the city of Portland has a whole thing on how you measure, where you measure, how they determine cost, all that. So a lot of cities have, have a formulation for this. I mean, might be able to plug and play what that is. But I think if they can't find the, I mean, you can always value the tree. Like you can have an arborist tell you what it's going to cost to replace it. You may not be able to find it, but then the fine becomes the cost of replacement. If the tree's unavailable, then it's the, the cost of replacement is the fine as well.
Well, then in that case, we should make, I, I'd have one be the ca, a fee equal to the cost of replacement. So that we can either get the money or the tree. But right now, the fee of 375 per inch in diameter. If we, if the planning board were to choose to apply the fee for a very large tree, then people would be getting off easy.
So can I, I'll make a suggestion and clarify one thing. The replacement is not in kind. If you chop down a 20 inch tree, you don't have to replace that with a 20 inch tree. You have to replace it with a, a total amount of a certain number of trees that meets that calculation. So it could be, you know, 10 two inch diameter new trees or you know, eight, three inch diameter trees. So it, it's not a, it's not a one-to-one replacement, but for for this meeting, what I'd like to suggest, since this is this is not an issue that has been a discussion, at least with Public Works or the Historical Commission. So what I'd like to do is I'll do a little bit more research and like, you know, Abby suggested there's there's lots of other examples out there and plug something in for the next discussion. And we'll find something better. Okay, so those were those were Sue's comments. Hang on. Okay, next we can go to Andrew's comments. So yes, I can, I, I'll be happy to put the definitions back into alphabetical order. I will go through and I'll make sure that all the tenses are the same. You are correct. That should say, public. Well, road right of way maintenance is defined and then below it. We define public road right of way.
But if you're talking about maintenance within the public road right of way, you're using that to find term.
In the, oh, okay.
Yeah, it should simply. Andrew's right. And it should be capital P, public and capital et cetera.
I don't think it is though, based on the way. They seem to use this. I don't know.
And so again. Oh, yep.
Good catch.
Look, we all missed that.
Well, we didn't all miss that.
Well, no, Andrew got it.
I thought you could write out Concord Public Works the first time and then put CPW in parentheses. That, that would. Then the rest of the CPWs could say CPW.
Yeah, isn't it?
Is that the first one? Or is it spelled out earlier in the document?
I will, I'll check.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll check.
Didn't say define.
Okay, I agree. So you have a, so it would be town.
Yeah, it uses the same language lower, I think, in the same page.
And then please delete the word the before town.
Okay, I think Linda, your edits also. Had comments on this section as well, right? So if the board wants to have a.
I noticed that with Andrew's suggested language here, emergency work related to utilities flooding erosion and other critical conditions is determined by the tree ward. The director of public works of the Concord Municipal Light Director seemed pretty good to me, but I noticed that it would cover emergency work. Undertaken by people other than. The town or authorized agents as long as it was determined by the tree warden or other people. We might be okay with that, but it is a slight expansion. To more than just town and authorized agents.
I wasn't sure what the tree warden had to do with emergency conditions, though.
I assume he's of a hanging branch. He's probably the one who has to deal with it. That was the only thing I could think of.
Or a tree that started falling over and hasn't completely fallen, but the tree warden could be involved in saying, can this thing be shored up or not?
Yeah, but one thing I, I wasn't sure about, and it sounds really funny. I assume that these people would be involved if there's a gas leak. That was the only thing I could think of, that if you have three people that aren't involved with actual gas line maintenance, would that cause a question of?
Um, no.
Public Works, but.
Any, any time that National Grid needs to do even an emergency work. Within the public road right of way, they are required to go through Concord Public Works Engineering.
Okay.
So does the board want? To add that?
Yes, I think so. Well. If we were to add that, rather than. The D starts with Concord Public Works and Concord Municipal Light Plant. I would delete that phrase and just start with the emergency work. If we add this extra stuff. Capital E, emergency, perfect. Right, I noticed this in another place. You pasted in new text from a comment and it put it into the wrong font size and I'd forgotten where that was. Actually, I made a note of it. I'll email you about it. It's format.
Oh, that's, that's okay. Sue, I'll go, I'll go through and do the whole document.
Yeah, cool. I looked at this. I don't think something is missing. I think it's that the way this is. The sentence is phrased with conjunctions within conjunctions within conjunctions is very hard to read. I actually rewrote it out with bullet points that in a way that made it easier to read, but I'm not sure if we would want to. Put that into the bylaw. I could share my, it, it to the rule regulations. I could share my screen to show it. I emailed it to you.
Yep, I have it. So I will, since that was Andrew's last comment, I can bring that up. So give me two seconds.
Yep.
Just so I can save this. Okay, there you go, Sue.
Right, so I broke it up, broke up that paragraph into a start and then three bullet points and then the remainder of the paragraph. And I think it clarifies the meaning, but I don't know if we want to format it that way. That helps. And you can delete the word of, but you're quite right. It's better to cross reference the section. Right before your addition of in section, question, question, it is, you can delete the word above.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Is that better, Andrew?
Yeah, I think so. It just, when you were, it was, it got very difficult to read when you were talking about permissions and who was, who you were asking and that sort of thing. But the, the bullet points seem to help clarify it.
Is that better? Does a colon go right there? Sue, or a semicolon? Or a comma?
Oh, it can be either a comma or a colon, but not a semicolon.
Okay. Any, anything else? All right, I will, I will mush all the, oh, no, we have Linda's. Hang on.
Sorry. What's the first bullet point mean?
Oh, you know, it should be for permission to cut or remove a tree. Or any portion thereof. I guess we could skip the word any and just say a tree or portion thereof, because in the third bullet, it just says or portion thereof. We may as well be consistent.
That's a stone wall.
Yeah, it does, but we should, we should say, it should be a portion of whatever. Yeah. Uh, thanks, Andrew. That does help.
Okay. Well, what if you.
Oops.
When they say a portion thereof of a tree, you could just, you know, be cutting a small branch. So that, I don't. You know, you could just. Wouldn't, I mean, are, don't we usually say something about a substantial branch or something, something, I mean, otherwise?
Well, it's true, but in the third bullet, we say removal or destruction of a stone wall or portion thereof, which covers a pebble. So maybe for both of them, we should say substantial portion thereof, but I don't know what we typically say in these cases.
These are, these are new regulations, so we can say. We can put in substantial.
In which case, yeah, there too.
That's, well, it's substantial, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. And, all right, so, and then Linda had a couple of comments, so just give me a second and I will. I will save this one too.
I was about to ask if you had saved because you did some good work. Save early, save often.
And last one. And your. First comment.
All right, we never defined, oh, no, we did define it. It was knee high right, but knee high where? Minimum, average, maximum, or what?
So I think Linda, your comments deal with length and heights, right?
Right. Well, if we define height, it would help define width because we have elongated with a length width ratio of four or greater. But, so if a wall was only one. Foot high, if we have short nays. Then it would have to be at least four feet long. And if it was two feet high, it would have to be at least eight feet long.
Okay.
So as long as we could say if it's average knee high or what. Will be okay. We can't say a minimum because if one stone get knocked, gets knocked down. Then the wall gets shorter.
Right.
And we can't say maximum because if one stone is more than knee high, all of a sudden your, your little edging row is a, a stone wall. So I guess we're stuck with average.
So where do you want me to put the word average?
Minimum, average height requirement.
Okay.
No, minute, sorry, no, no, no. It's a minimum height requirement. Here you have to go to the previous version because we changed it from having knee high single stones, a budding one another. To having single stones. Of knee height. Ooh, where do we put it?
I think I can figure it out.
Okay, good.
Okay. Yes, I think I, I think I already, I, I got that one from a different version. Yes, we have already put together a scenic road application.
And does it have a statement of purposes?
Um, yes.
Okay.
Yep, but I'll double check that again. And then you want to talk about 2.18? Should we add something that says we can add, ask for additional information? Oh, sure. I wouldn't put the for example, but just. No, I won't. I was just gonna put.
Okay. Place holder, yeah.
And I think, oh, no, there was one more. Oh yeah, should we have something about. Preservation of natural resources and environmental values as part of the. Criteria.
Can you scroll up another couple lines? Context, consideration, decision, right? That makes sense to me. Although we do have 2.3.6 consistency with articulated town policies which include sustainability.
What do you mean by natural resources and environmental values? Cause you have to remember, you're only talking about public shade trees. And stone walls. Right, well, we just talked about shade trees and their size and how meaningful they are when they're. Large is not just because they're beautiful, but because they're important for the environment too.
But can that be covered by section 2.3.6?
Or how about 2.3.2?
Well, that's historic character values. Here we're talking about future character and values, namely. Uh, preserving the environment and/or sustainability. Uh, and/or climate mitigation. Which I think is all covered under 2.3.6.
Or can you just add it to scenic and his aesthetic characteristics and. Natural resources, environmental values?
Well, but these are, those aren't necessarily.
That's not, I mean, I think scenic and aesthetic is different than environmental and natural resources. I just. But.
Well, just. If you want to make it more, even more clear, how about in section 2.3.6, adding to the end of the paragraph? It's, uh, take consistency with other town policies into consideration in the evaluation of an application, comma. Including preservation of natural resources and environmental values.
That would be fine.
That would be fine.
Um, I think we changed that in Andrew's town officials or its agents.
I mean, it seemed to me that if um they're dead trees that, I guess.
Yeah, I, I think some of the other changes amended this to make it more clear, but I, I'll go back and make sure.
That's fine. It could say trees or portions thereof.
Right.
Or tree stuff.
And then we took care of, yeah, and we already did that.
Uh, and then I will work on that one and that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other, any comments um from other board members? I see their comments um from uh members of the public. I think uh Sven was actually first uh earliest, so why don't we take you?
Thank you, um Sven Viva fifty burn up, also serving on the Public Works Commission. So first of all, thank you for um all the time and work you're putting in there. Um, definitely um from Public Works Commission, and we really appreciate the work you're doing. Uh, based on the version that was on the webpage, and you discussed it lengths was different, several iterations. Just I think three additional comments, one on the enforcement. They had a discussion around um inch radius and, and so on, square inches. Um, I believe that under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter eighty seven, Section six, the maximum fine you can charge is five hundred dollars. So um definitely you should review that and consult with Town Council um that you're not um getting in conflict there with um Massachusetts General Law. Um, again, that section was eighty, Chapter eight um uh eighty seven, Section six. Then on um the exemptions um for um public works, there was a question in there with respect to um uh should this be kind of other critical conditions should be further defined? So um definitely Public Works um personnel is, is available to define that further. Like the biggest concern we have is around structural integrity or public safety issues. Um, so if, if that could be somehow implemented there that uh if it's with respect to structural integrity of a stone wall and public safety related to that, um that, that is covered in the exemption. And last point was um around um, yeah, definition of stone wall, but you have it in the other section that we want to make sure that the historic part is covered, but I just saw on your discussion that um there is a historic um section in this, so um that should, should cover the comments we had based on the version that was on the webpage. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh Pamela Drift.
Thank you, Pamela Drift. Concord Green, thirteen Concord Green. Sorry. Um, I just wanted to point out that um circumference is not, is very different than diameter. And if you want to increase the penalty for older mature trees, then I strongly suggest you use circumference instead. It's easier to measure and it would encompass the, the larger volume of an older mature tree in a way that a line through the center wouldn't.
Thank you very much. Are there any additional public comments?
If, could you put in why the environmental um benefits of the mature trees are? Um, I know there are places where they have worked out the amount of carbon sequestration of a mature tree in terms, in dollar terms. It might be helpful as an informational thing as to why we would want to do that.
That's a good suggestion. I'm not sure if it, it is um turned into rules and regulations, but um we can think about that and I think we want to get um environmental um sustainability benefits that we can. Um, though this is um more focused at this um historic scenic benefits. Um, given that it's limited um options in terms of trees that are actually involved, but
Thank you.
Thank you for that comment. Okay. Okay, um. So I think Elizabeth, uh thank you so much because you're going to have a lot of work pasting this all together and um and as you mentioned, this goes to Town Council. And um we will get to do it all over again, hopefully in that, the not too distant future. So, yes, thanks so much. Okay, so then we can move on to the um Hosmer Meadows definitive subdivision. Do, can you walk us through that as well?
Um, yeah, so um for this definitive subdivision plan, it was for the um creation of the four lots and the performance guarantee that the developer chose was a restrictive covenant which restricts the sale of um each lot. And as each lot was finished, they are required to provide um an as-built plan for lots one, two, and three. It was an interim as-built plan along with their engineer's list of what was remaining and the cost of that to make sure that the last remaining lot was sufficient to cover that cost. Um, the developer has finished um all of the roadway improvements and the utilities and drainage and construction of the last house on Lot Four and um the as-built plans and site inspections have been done by um Natural Resources, CMLP, Concord Fire Department, Concord Public Works Engineering, Concord Public Works Water and Sewer, um and the Health Division for the On-Site Sewers Disposal Systems and everybody is satisfied um with the as-built plans and the project. Um, all, all of the required street tree um plantings um have been installed and, and I must say the developer did um plant a significant um more than what was just required. Uh, so the recommendation is that the board grant the release of the final lot, Lot Four from the restrictive covenant.
Any comment from um or questions from board members? Any public comments on this? And Elizabeth, do we need to um make anything uh yeah, in terms of um this approval contingent on anything? Or is it just, okay. Okay, so um can I get a motion to, or can I make a motion to um release Lot Four of fifty-five McColler Lane of the Hospers Meadows definition, definitive, sorry, subdivision from the restrictive covenant and authorize the Chair, Clerk, or Town Planner to sign the release? Could I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, Andrew Boardman?
Yes.
Sue Felshen?
Aye.
Abby Flanagan?
Aye.
Mark Giddings?
Aye.
Rob Almeida?
Yes.
And myself, Linda Miller, yes. So with that, um any planner or um board liaison updates?
Um, I can give you one um planner update. Um, I did meet with the developers um who are proposing the redevelopment of one sixty-six Com Ave and um they are going back and um looking at the project and I believe they will be um removing the restaurant, proposed restaurant use, um which uh was um pretty much the, the driving force for many of the issues and concerns. Um, and increasing the retail space a little bit um and having it be more of a presence around the end um and increasing the number of units from ten to twelve uh with two of them being deed restricted um as affordable. And they are also looking at some modifications to the parking lot to have the driveway in um and then a um right turn only out onto Com Ave. And so they are currently meeting with um natural resources, Public Works Engineering, um and Fire Department and um but I believe we'll be submitting revised plans. And it does make a substantial difference uh in their request for relief from parking.
Great, well, we will have something to keep us busy into the fall or late summer. So thank you. Um, any other um board comments or updates? And then I guess we have um one set of minutes to approve, is that right?
Uh, yes, and I can, um, I know I sent some um revisions later this afternoon based on um comments that I received. Uh, so clarified this um one section, there were um questions raised on, on the section regarding the twenty twenty-three annual town meeting.
Oh, and that was where it was, the smaller font size. Miss, finally, Miss Hughes noted that. Yep.
Okay. Um, and then there were just some, um, I think everybody got these, there were just some minor edits. Some spaces and, and.
Did everyone have adequate time or feel comfortable in um? Because I know this came in a little bit later today. Is everyone comfortable with um having a vote on this? Seeing no hands. Um, so uh could I have a, or I moved to approve the minutes of April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three um as presented, we not, don't have to say as amended, so because we all got copies of it. Okay. Um, is there a second?
I second it.
Thank you, and um we'll go with Andrew.
Yes.
Sue?
Aye.
Abby?
Aye.
Mark?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So, thank you very much, and I think that makes for a um hopefully quick meeting. So everyone have a good rest of the evening and um look forward to seeing you on the uh twenty-second and twenty-third.
Oh, um, if I could ask, um, I will be sending an email um and explaining to everybody um on the August twenty-third, we are gonna have breakout sessions, but um they're gonna be super easy, only twenty minutes. All you have to do is um take down people's questions and, um, but so I'll be sending out an email because I'm looking for facilitators. Um, so just wanted to let everybody know.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good night all. Good night, everybody.
Good night.